Father, we thank you for the opportunity we have to live here in Garden City, where truly the world does grow. So we ask you to move mildly through each and every one of our commission meetings, Father. We re- rest for your wisdom, and it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Are there any corrections to the minutes of the January 15th? If not, they'll stand approved as submitted. At this time, we have public comment. This is for anyone in the audience that would like to address the commission on anything that is not on the agenda.
Mayor Matthew Blood had called or arranged in advance the opportunity to speak to the commission at this meeting, and so if he'd like to come up, Matthew?
Pull that mic down. There you go.
Hello. I would just like to use this time to specifically firstly, thank you for giving me this time. And also to say that I would just like to say that I would essentially just want to give a reminder and wish to further push forward the idea of opening up the idea of a safety flag to the public in the near future. The same idea which I proposed multiple months ago in May.
Okay.
So do you have any questions?
Do you have it? Do you have the picture?
No, not currently on me.
I think.
We had it. Matt, can you pull it up?
Mr. Blood, thank you for coming. I agree with you. I think a city flag would be a very nice symbol for our city. I think I liked your design last time, but I know it kind of shared some of the city logo design and some of those things. And I think we need to come up with some sort of more general process to maybe get a proposal for designs. We could include yours, and then we need to figure out a process to have the city kind of vote on it. But I'm really glad you brought this to our attention again, because it was a very good idea that you had.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for being here. Yeah, I really enjoyed your explanation of why you chose the colors, and so it was really, really well done. But thank you for being here today again and helping us get this off the ground again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all. Thanks a lot, Matthew.
Good job. Thanks.
Six A.
If there's no other public comment, Mayor, we'll move on. Six A, recognition of the 2018 City of Garden City Safety Award recipients. Ally?
Mayor and Commissioners, this time we'd like to present the safety awards. Now, the annual safety award, the departments are all required to turn in a form that then has certain criteria that we're looking for, such as attending safety meetings, looking at safe practices. And so those departments are chosen after the committee has the opportunity to review all of those forms. And then the annual or the individual award recipients are chosen based on those nominations received from other city employees. The airport was chosen as the annual department award winner. Due to the icy fog, they weren't able to make it in to receive that award, but we'd still like to congratulate the airport on their work and safety for 2018. Moving into the individual, for the fourth quarter award recipients, we have Robert Ariano and Cale Bunpaseth were selected as the fourth quarter award recipients and will each receive a personal day. After reviewing the entire year's award recipients, the committee chose Ralph Rochat as the overall recipient for the 2018 safety recognition recipient. So Ralph will receive a check for $175. And at this time, I'd invite them to come up and accept those awards.
Congratulations. I appreciate your work. Ralph, congratulations. Cale, congratulations too.
Thank you.
Do you want us to take pictures with all of us or?
Individually and then all together.
All right. You're fine.
Okay. One, two, one more. Okay. One, two. Okay.
Really appreciate it.
Wrestling now.
One, two, three, one.
I'm not wrestling anybody. I didn't go out well.
One, two, three, one more. Okay. And then we'll do a whole group.
All right.
She wants a group one.
I'll get the bag. Sure appreciate the work of the safety committee and then also Ally working with that group as its staff liaison. We mention it each time, this is the impact of what this group does and the impact they have on the organization translates into certainly a significant amount of financial savings, but it keeps our people safe too, which is more important. But both those things are appreciated, and Ralph, Bob, and Cale, congratulations. I think six B would be your consideration to approve a request from Sheila Crane Downtown Vision under section 635 and 6133 for the possession, consumption, and sale of cereal malt beverages in conjunction with the Beef Beer and Boots event on June 8th.
I didn't know if you had any questions about that. It's in conjunction with Beef Empire Days. Last year was the first year for that event. We applied for a liquor license through the Kansas Department of Revenue, which requires the governing body, the local governing body, to sign off on approval of that event before we completely submit that license to them for Stevens Park. We had no problems last year. Everything went very well. We checked with city departments as well as the police department following the event. There were no incidents that they were aware of, so we would like to repeat that this year. This will be the only event associated with Downtown Vision where there will be alcohol sold for 2019.
So Sheila, I know you have a way to make sure that they're 21 and over and then also a way to, are you having the safe serve people or how does that work when you have the alcohol served?
So we have trainings with Matt Ming with ABC for those that are going to be volunteering for that night. It is completely fenced in. There is a single point of entry. Multiple people checking IDs and wristbands that have been through that training with ABC.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'll make a motion to approve the request as presented.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the request for Downtown Vision. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried five to one, five to zero.
Start having five to one votes. People are going to ask questions. Item C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve event requests from the Friends of Lee Richardson Zoo for the Jungle Run Car Show. And Kristi? No? Yeah?
Yep.
Hello?
Hi.
The event request is similar to years past, so if you have any questions, I can try to answer them, or Jessica, the executive director of the Friends is also here. She's hiding back there.
I'll make the motion that we approve the request as submitted.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the request for the Friends of Lee Richardson Zoo for the Jungle Run Car Show. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item D, similar request, this one for the Wild Affair event.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Lee Richardson Zoo Wild Affair for 2019 as submitted.
I'll second.
Who's second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
And then item D, the final request from the Friends for this one for Boo at the Zoo.
We should make them sweat a little bit on one of these.
Yeah.
No, you don't.
I'll make the motion that we approve the Lee Richardson Zoo Boo at the Zoo event for 2019 as submitted.
I'll second. Second. Seconded by Commissioner Dale. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item seven A, Gerald Schultz, Chair of the Countywide Sales Tax Overview Committee, is here to provide an update on the progress of the projects approved by the voters in the November 17 election. Jerry?
Good afternoon. The report was submitted, so I'm not going to try to belabor it. I'll hear any questions that you might have and hopefully provide you answers. We have some really good news with regard to the preliminary project being conducted at Jenny Barker Road according to the tax vote. As you can tell, city and county staff have made substantial progress to address concerns regarding design drainage effect on adjoining property owners, utility coordination, and issues of right of way. Jenny Barker Road is an important intersection in the growth of our community, and it's one of those projects that it's hopeful that we can move it along as soon as possible. As you can tell, the fire station indoor shooting range will have to wait as we continue to collect the sales tax over a period of 15 years. The zoo, however, is on the front burner in 2019. We have three projects down at the zoo, approximately $2.5 million. We've collected $1,300,000. And we were informed yesterday that bids may be made as early as 2000, the spring of 2019, with construction commencing in later 2019. It's incredible that we can move along this fast, and it's kudos to the city staff, the zoo, and those others involved that we can have improvements at the Primate and Flamenco Exhibits as well as the zoo hospital, all as authorized by the voters. I would like to comment that the report states to you clearly and unequivocally, our purpose as a sales tax oversight board is to make sure that the sales tax is being collected, two, that it's being used for the projects that's authorized by the voters, and three, to make annual reports to you. This annual report was given to Mr. Partington to submit to the county commissioners, and unless they have additional questions, I will not be presenting this to them at a different time. Or obviously, if they have questions, I'll go answer them. Long and the short is, is that I would like to give recognition to Melinda Hitz. She's coordinating the collection of the sales tax as well as the treasurer and their efforts in working together to make sure that accurate and detailed collection and dispersals are made to the oversight board. We have no questions for them. They have answered all of our questions and provided all of our information. And we will meet four additional times here in 2019 and provide another annual report commencing in most likely February of 2020. Does anybody have any questions about oversight?
Jerry, this 1.3, is that through what, the end of the year?
That's through the end of 2018.
Okay.
Mr. Schultz, can you remind all of us, the members and the makeup of the board, please?
The makeup of the board is the city is Kathleen Whitley and myself, and the county is Marty Nester and Tim.
Miller.
Miller, thank you. And each of us have three or five-year terms. Mine's a three-year. Kathleen's is a five-year, and I believe Tim took the three and Marty the five-year term. The city commission minutes were clear on that. The county is not so clear, but we decided that amongst ourselves at yesterday's meeting.
And then the chair of each?
The chair of each commission sits on the board, so they have firsthand information. Mr. Mayor was not available yesterday, attending a funeral.
Well, thank you for chairing our portion of that, and I really appreciate the report, and I know that you've got incredible people working with you in the oversight. I'm excited to hear that the zoo is on board for this year, so that's neat to see these things actually happen.
Well, it's an exciting time to be part of the utilization of this sales tax money for large improvements to our city. And the wisdom of the voters was to be able to make these improvements utilizing something other than property tax. And so the oversight responsibility of us under your interlocal agreement allows us to work closely with your staff, and they've done a marvelous job. And like I said, the treasurer and Melinda have done great work and provided us detail upon which I know that we can rely.
So the money is coming in according to plan?
Yes. Other than the first month of collections, and the collections have averaged around $200,000 a month. And that's why we're proceeding with the zoo, because we anticipate having sufficient funds in 2019 to complete those projects as budgeted. It's an exciting time to be able to make those kinds of improvements at our zoo.
Any other questions?
I don't know how much the commissioners get down to our zoo. When I have grandchildren in this community, it's a great asset.
Definitely.
Thanks for your report.
Thank you very much.
Item seven B, the governing body is going to be presented with a little bit of an update and good news from Blue Cross Blue Shield, and I don't think they're present today, but Ally's going to report on their behalf.
Mayor and Commissioners, am presenting on our health insurance group reserve status. Last year, if you can remember, we had a reserve, a refund from that reserve amount due to the premiums coming in. Now, Blue Cross Blue Shield holds those reserve funds for us, and then if we hit, if our claims are over a certain amount, then those reserve funds are used to pay for those claims. And then in this case, when our reserves reach a maximum, then we get that refund amount. So the refund for plan year 2018 was 105,675.24.
That's incredible.
And last year's 258?
Yes, 258,147.41.
So how does this, I mean, we get this back, but on the premium, how does this look for premiums? I mean, we're getting refunds, but are premiums lowering or staying the same or?
Sure. Our premiums are staying relatively the same, sorry. Our premiums are staying relatively the same. We've seen small increases and decreases throughout the last several years. And so then we've definitely go and use these refund amounts when we're negotiating with Blue Cross Blue Shield to say, hey, we are getting that refund amount, so we could potentially have those decreases on the premium side.
Okay. I appreciate the information about Rowell Clinic and that it is making a big difference. And so that, you know, especially with the funds that are being spent there, but that they are really, that it's making a difference. And so I appreciate the information you included in the report. I thought was, that was kind of exciting to see the positive, when you have healthcare available to you, that people are using it, and it's actually making a difference, so.
And this refund will be used to offset expenses of Rowell Clinic?
No, this will go into our health insurance reserve for the city. So yeah, we just hold that in the reserve fund.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Good job.
Item C, Public Works Director Curran will provide the governing body an update on the status of the city's transportation alternative program grant application for the Eighth Street Reconstruction and Enhancement Project. Sam?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. During the August 21 commission meeting, the governing body authorized the mayor to sign a resolution to apply for a transportation alternative grant through the Kansas Department of Transportation for the Eighth Street Reconstruction and Enhancement Project. Staff is pleased to announce that we received federal funds to a maximum of $750,000 for this project, and those funds will be used to go towards the streetscape and the pedestrian improvements that was in the application. Because we received federal money, it does change the timeline of the project. It moves it out, because now that federal funds are involved, KDOT has oversight on that project, so it'll have to go through their timeline, their approval. So instead of building that in 2020, chances are that the project will be built in 2021. The soonest we can bid this project is July of 2020. So that's the reason it'll push it out to 2021. We have also identified all the funding sources for this project. We have three sources. One is the Bank Federal Exchange for 1.1 million dollars. We did have a 2018 bond, 500,000, and now the 750,000, and that is the funding that we need to complete this project.
Very good news.
Congratulations.
So Sam, so what you're showing in the picture that you include in the packet, so all of that, we have everything that you wanted to do, is that correct?
That is correct. Now, some of our in-kind funds will be the street department building some of the sidewalks and some additional parking areas over by the church, and we'll have to do that in-house, but that's in-house kind money, so. But that is what we're looking at right now of the approved project.
That's a great project, and it's long overdue for some modernization down there. It's going to help. You're going to save the brick?
We are saving the brick. We're going to try to use it in other areas of the community, but this is a good improvement for downtown, so.
Excellent.
Well, congratulations. The federal grant is not easy, so congratulations.
Thank you.
We're on a roll, refund checks and getting grants and who's up next?
That's right.
Police Department.
All right, we have available staff for questions on items D through F. If you have any questions on the reports or anything else for that matter while we've got staff here, that'd be great.
No, I did get a chance to visit with Melinda, and I know that we were ahead of collections, and so was it two or three percent ahead of?
Per calendar year.
For the sales tax, right. And then can you remind me again what it was per month that we're trying to collect or average? Average in a month in sales tax?
Sales tax amount?
Is that right? Or can we just ask about that? Or are we? Okay. Yeah, so it's the one that's talking about that monthly sales tax.
Do you want to come on up and?
Was it 250,000?
200,000.
I'm sorry, that you said that we are attempting to collect every month. Is that what our goal was?
The city's sales tax annually, we're looking at roughly 6.4 million.
Okay.
So we're looking at between, anywhere between 500,000 and 600,000 a month that we would like to see come in as receipts for city sales tax. Now, you've got to remember, when this star bond comes into play, that number is going to go down. But we've planned on that, so just because you have a decrease in the city's sales tax doesn't mean that it's not coming in, it's just going to another project.
But the, the sales tax increase is $200,000 per month.
Right.
Above and beyond this.
For that. Yeah, the trend lines are really nice to see, so I appreciate the graphics you included.
All right, thanks.
It is almost remarkable, because they just continue at this.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
It's interesting.
Okay.
With that, we'll call your attention to meetings. If no, we do need to make some final plans on DC, so please, if you haven't already, get with Sealan after the meeting, and we will lock, lock in rooms and begin solving air, air travel puzzles and getting everybody to and from, to and from DC. I don't see anything else on there. We need to make reservations for, or RSVPs for, just a public announcement that the commission will be gathering again Thursday from 8:30 to 1 for, for a training with Mike Condev on governance. And then we've set also a gathering for March 6th, our annual, the commission's annual goal-setting retreat. We used to call it our February retreat, but we can't probably have a February retreat in March.
It's in March.
The 8:30 to 4 again on March 6th will be the goal-setting retreat.
So then on the February 26th, will that be also here? I mean, I know it's at 6:00 PM, will it be in?
No, I don't believe it is here. I believe this is at Horse Thief Reservoir.
Okay, but they're making a presentation.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so on February 19th, there's a, there's a joint meeting of the governing bodies that will be held in the time slot that is our pre-meeting workshop. So we've got a regular meeting on the 19th at 11:00 AM. We'll, we'll get together for a joint meeting. Holcomb and Finney County will be invited. The, the topic of that meeting is going to be a report from Horse Thief as to what they've got going on. Horse Thief themselves is having their annual meeting in conjunction with the Horse Thief Reservoir Board and the Pawnee Watershed District Board. They have an annual joint meeting. That'll be on the 26th out at Horse Thief Reservoir.
Thank you for the clarification.
All right. With that, I think we're ready for 9A. It's the appropriation ordinance. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2476-2019A.
I would move that we approve ordinance 2476-2019A.
Second? There's been a motion made and seconded that we approve appropriation ordinance 2476-2019A. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item A is still about four minutes away. I don't believe item 10B is probably something you should handle in four minutes. So if there, if the commission doesn't mind, we move to the item E, which is a motor vehicle nuisance. Is that okay?
Yes.
So item E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution, which would abate a nuisance at 510 St. John. Caleb?
Yes, this is our typical, typical motor vehicle nuisance that's come before you that we have not received any comment from the property owners in regards to this vehicle.
What's the resolution?
Number on that?
2785. Dash 2019. I make a motion that we approve resolution 2785-2019.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve resolution 2785 dash 2019. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And item F, similar resolution regarding a vehicle violation at 2104 Denison Street.
Getting no contact from?
Yeah, no contact regarding this motor vehicle nuisance at 2104 Denison Street.
If approved, it'd be resolution 2786-2019.
I move that we approve resolution 2786-2019.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve resolution 2786-2019.
We don't have a second.
Oh, we don't have a second.
I second.
Okay, thank you. Moving a little too fast. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Item G, another motor vehicle nuisance. This would abate the one at 2011 Denison Street.
2787?
Yeah, if approved, it would be resolution number 2787-2019.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 2787-2019.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve resolution 2787-2019. Does that have a license plate on it? It did, yeah?
I believe it.
Why would it be?
There is no tag on it, and it's on blocks, so.
Oh, I see. Okay. Yeah, I see it now.
Stands there.
I thought that was snow.
Yes. This, considering it's in the front yard, this is also a safety hazard, you know, considered attractive nuisance as well, because oftentimes children are attracted to things that.
Look out at the ordinary.
Yes. All those in favor of resolution 2787-2019?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Now it's 1:30.
All right.
Okay.
Mayor and Commissioners, item 10A, scheduled 1:30 public hearing. Mayor and Commissioners, item 10A, scheduled 1:30 public hearing on the creation of a community improvement district. Upon closing the public hearing, the governing body is asked to consider approval of an ordinance creating a community improvement district for Fulton Founder's Brewery, Inc. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2824 dash 2019.
Madam Secretary, please note that, um, Mayor Dan Dan Cazor stepped down. So we'll go ahead and we will call the public hearing open. So at this time, anyone who would like to make a comment on the public hearing, we'll go ahead and open up that, the mic to you.
Mayor, if there's nobody from the public, I'll just clarify for, uh, for, for the commission's benefit that the governing body accepted this petition some time ago. Um, and, uh, the second step is, uh, in this process is the adoption of a resolution of intent. It was subsequently found that the resolution of intent approved by the governing body on July 3rd, uh, giving notice of a public hearing was not published as required by the act, although the commission conducted the public hearing and adopted the ordinance creating CID. And on January, uh, 8th, the governing body took an act to, uh, correct the situation, adopted and published resolution number 2772 dash 2019 to conduct another public hearing. The resolutions, uh, scheduled it for this day at 1:30, which is now going on. Uh, we've provided all the appropriate, uh, appropriate notice. So this act didn't delay Flat Mountain Brewery's op, opening, um, and it doesn't prevent the business since its opening from collecting the CID increment, but the distribution of the additional increment will not occur until approximately two months after, uh, the facility opened or until after the clock is passed on, uh, the action that's going to be before you today.
Thank you for the clarification.
You bet.
Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 2824 dash 2019.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
So it's been moved and seconded. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you very much.
Sorry for moving so fast. I didn't real, yes, I mean, I appreciate it. It was my first time to actually hold a public hearing, so I was like a little bit excited, so I'll get better as that goes on, so.
What ordinance was that?
Well done.
2824.
Item, yeah, item 10B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a charter ordinance pertaining to the general improvements in the city and the issuing of general obligation bonds. This charter ordinance would increase the annual maximum dollar amount of general governing issuance for certain projects authorized under its provisions without an election from $350,000 to $2,500,000. If approved, it would be charter ordinance number 31. And I'll let Melinda start this.
Yeah. To give you a little bit of background, uh, the past few years, the city has had some major public utility infrastructure expenditures that required long-term financing. And you've got one that's currently coming up, uh, that you've recently heard about on the electric system. The financing can either be done with general obligation bonds or it can be done with revenue bonds. Now, there, at the back of your packet, I showed you an example of what a general obligation bond was compared to a revenue bond. A revenue bond requires more in principle because you have to fund a bond reserve for the life of the bond, which is 20 years. Uh, so when you look at the total costs on, on just this issue, you would be, uh, saving around 500,000 if you could issue general obligation bonds compared to revenue bonds. Um, so this, you know, that's what we're, uh, looking for whenever we can is to issue general obligation bonds. Uh, the authority for issuance in the past has been the city's charter ordinance number 13, uh, which was approved by the city commission in 1975. Our bond counsel has to, she uses that along with home rule and several other options when she has to substantiate what we're doing with the, uh, attorney general's office at the state of Kansas. And so she suggested to us that we try to, um, make this into our charter ordinance and be able to issue, especially for utility projects with a growing city, you're gonna have, you know, lots more projects come up other than this one. Uh, and being able to use that general obligation bond is, is so much easier, um, and doesn't require near as much money. Um, but taking a look at this, uh, the new charter ordinance removes any calendar year principal amount limitations on the bonds issued for all city utility projects, airport and transportation facility projects, and authorizes bonds in any amount the city determines necessary for such projects without an election. Now, for any other items such as bridges, public parks, recreational facilities, we did cap it at 2.5 million. If it goes above that for those type of projects, it would, it would go to an election of the, uh, whole city. So a charter ordinance, uh, has to be approved, uh, by two-thirds vote of the commission. It has to be published twice, once a week for two consecutive weeks. After that, a 60-day protest period begins, and if there is a sufficient petition filed during that time, the effectiveness of the charter ordinance must be submitted to an election. So this, there'll be a 60-day waiting period after your second publication.
Since I had two major questions that jumped out at me from this, I, I hoped you could clarify. So first of all, kind of opening up the amount of the principal for any geo-bond, certainly what you're saying makes sense, but is it consistent with what other municipalities have done? Certainly seems consistent with what our bond counsel has asked, but to be able to kind of open that lid, I, I guess we could say, um, to the more desirable type of bond, um, is that consistent? Because basically opening that up kind of takes a, a, another check off. Does that consist with other municipalities have done in Kansas?
It is. Um, city of Wichita, which you know is a growing community, they have no limit at all in their, in their ordinance. Um, other smaller cities, you know, Salina and some of those others, uh, they do have some limits, but ours is probably smaller than theirs, uh, to tell you the truth. And, uh, when Matt and I looked at that charter ordinance from 1975 being 350,000, that was a lot of money back in 1975.
Right, and I see that that makes sense just with the cost of, and I agree with there being some sort of cap when we're talking about those particular kinds of projects because I think that's where people start to have more opinions and values about where money should be spent versus if we have to replace a water main, we replace a water main. Um, so I, I, I see the difference in that. I, I guess that speaks to my second question of two and a half million better reflects what 350,000 looked like in 1975?
Uh, 1.6 or 1.7 depending on which online calculator you use for cost of money comparisons between, uh, 1975 and 2018, 2019. We believe the other, uh, you know, the balance of that can be easily justified if not, I, even, is probably a little lower than you could argue is the difference between a town of less than 20,000 people to a town of over 30,000 people. Not the same size community, uh, period or in relation to, uh, other governments, so. But just straight dollar for dollar, what's the difference or the purchasing power of, uh, of, of $350,000 1975 money and 2019 makes about 1.6, 1.7 million?
Right, but also just like the cost of what a, one of these projects would be reasonably?
Commissioner Burge, I had the, I had the same question and so I actually stopped by, we put a call into Mary and is it Mary Banwar?
Mary Carson.
Mary Carson, I'm sorry. Um, so, and Mary talked about us in a growing city, this is a, this is a really great option for us as a growing city. And the 2.5 million dollars, when you think about the, like you said, water main or electrical utilities, and especially owning their own utility is a little bit different than some cities. But when she talked about Wichita not having a cap and then the savings that we experience, and I thought was interesting too, she talked about the AG's office and I don't, I don't know if you can, there's, it's a lot different working in the AG's office now, the, the Kansas State there. And so I think that's a lot of the reasons why she's saying this makes some of these projects much easier, is that correct? Am I recapping correctly, so?
Yes. And all the new SEC rulings, uh, that they have to address at the AG's office, uh, this would make it much simpler to, uh, get the bond issued through their office, uh, with no question.
But it's also, like you were saying earlier, it's cheaper too if we go this direction than the, than the other way. Less paperwork too and.
Right.
Those types of things. I'll make the motion that we approve charter ordinance number 31.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve charter ordinance number 31. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Melinda, for your work and Mary Carson's work and Randy was involved as well. We don't do charter ordinances very often.
Yeah, that was number 31 right there. So we made, we made some history in that one.
And it repealed number 13 that was done ages ago. Item C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution to establish a public hearing on the advisability of creating the campus and Kansas redevelopment tax increment financing district on March 19th, 2019, 1:30 PM. If approved, it would be 2790? Where did we stop on, uh, vehicle nuisances? On G? Okay, I got a little carried away on my right. Sorry, 2788? All right, if approved, it would be resolution number 2788 dash 2019. Melissa?
Mayor and Commissioners, thank you for your time. Um, we, and the neighborhood development staff have been working with 2017 East Kansas LLC representative Kristen on the redevelopment of this property at Campus Drive in Kansas Avenue. Uh, this area to re, be redeveloped is 11.35 acres plus or minus. If you remember, on January 15th, Kristen did come before when the MOU was being passed and presented some concept designs and direction that they were gonna go with this property. Um, so they proposed in this area to have multiple uses, including but not limited to the retail, restaurant and office uses. At this time, the development proposes to use TIF funding to assist with the development of the infrastructure and at a later time will be coming before you again to, um, ask to consider a community improvement district to levy the additional sales tax for remaining development not covered under our TIF district eligibility. The developer is requesting a TIF district funding, but will utilize private finance and reimburse themselves with the pay-as-you-go reimbursement over time. A market study will be provided at the time of the public hearing on March 19th for your review to help determine the feasibility of the TIF district. Um, this is a multi-step process as it is when we would do with the CID's and RHID's. So, um, the MOU was kind of one of the first steps that they took and then this is really the second step to help establish their public hearing. Um, they're requesting a public hearing on March 19th and that's when the organs will be passed to establish that TIF district. You have three alternatives before you. The governing body may approve the resolution to establish a public hearing for the campus and Kansas redevelopment district. You may not approve the resolution to establish a public hearing for campus and Kansas redevelopment. Um, you may also defer the action until a later date. Um, there is no fiscal note at this time. Uh, I'm sorry, there are no fiscal obligations at this time for Kansas, campus and Kansas redevelopment district, considering they'll be using private financing. Um, staff recommends alternative one.
Can I ask just a, a question on that market feasibility study? Will that be included in our packet for review prior to the meeting and also available to the public then with, when the packet's published?
Correct.
Okay, so it won't just be like presented at the meeting as?
Correct, so it'll kind of enter your packet.
Perfect, thank you.
And so will that also include, so you talked about the TIF district funding and then so will that also include how much additional they could get on the CID?
Um, that can help determine what their request will be for their, um, what type of tax they want to recapture. So with the brewery, for example, they did a 1%, they can capture up to 2%. So, um, that for, um, that feasibility statement will help them determine how much sales tax they want to capture.
So they won't, they won't actually ask for that at this first?
Correct.
Okay, and so that's, so and then, so and then CID is used for, is it certain type of retail or is it all retail can capture CID?
Um, CID is really just used for buildings to recapture, so, um, like a bank could use it, the restaurants could use it, um, you could do it for facade redevelopment as well.
I make a motion that we approve resolution 2788 dash 2019.
Second.
Is there a second? Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve, um, resolution 2788 dash 2019, referring to the property at campus and Kansas redevelopment. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Melissa.
D?
Item D, the governing body is asked to consider and recommend an amendment to, uh, code of ordinances of the city of Garden City, section 38 dash 62, order of violation. And this is a process change and Caleb will go over, uh, how this would impact the nuisance abatement process.
Yes, uh, the current code of ordinances regarding, uh, violations of motor vehicles, um, as we observed, uh, may need some updating, uh, with this amendment. After observing motor vehicle nuisance returning to the same property in the same condition that was previously abated by, either by the city or the person, um, uh, staff and the city attorney reviewed the phrasing of the current code, although staff has found that most cases, motor vehicle nuisances do not return to the same property. In some instances, the issue does arise. And with recommendation from the city attorney to amend the code, staff believes the amendment is beneficial by the code of ordinances being more comprehensive, by abatement process being, and then the abatement process being more efficient and by the city being healthier, safer and maintaining the general welfare of the citizens. And, uh, what most often that we see the issue is, is, um, where we have abated a situation or, or we note a situation and the vehicle moves to a nearby property, um, and then is brought back to the property, um, once we start a case at the other and then we're, we find ourselves inefficiently sending notices to multiple properties for ultimately the same violation. And so what this, uh, ordinance amendments does is allows the process to continue, um, on that property for that violation if it comes back in the same condition, uh, and not meeting the motor vehicle nuisance requirements, which is inoperable or untapped. So.
But how many, how many times do we see this? I mean, is it a reoccurring thing or like?
This happens, I would say probably one in every 10 cases. Who, who'll come back or, or someone will come and get it out of an impound situation and it'll come back to the property, um, without the tags or still being inoperable. And so that's kind of the situation that we run into and then we're, we're called again to go back out to the same situation and then, um, start the process all over again.
So this would just, that, this would just cut that process short? You'd just be able to go and pick it up right away then?
That's correct, yeah. If it's not tagged and inoperable, if it still meets the requirements of?
So the original, the original?
So, so your letter notification will go out stating the fact if they bring it back that it's gonna be tagged.
That is correct, yeah. The new notices will, if this is, if this amendment is passed, then we will, we will make the changes to the notices that we send and the notices that they receive, so.
And it's somewhat like the weed eradication ordinances we have in state law. Once we give notice and the problem is, is abated, if the weeds come back, we don't have to go through the process again, giving notice, we can simply go out and, and, uh, cut the weeds or they, they can cut the weeds. This will help with repetition of, of notices in the future.
Is this ordinance 2825, is that right?
Yes.
So on this, if they bring it back, what do we do? So the way? So like we run through the whole process first, goes to the impound, they bring it back?
And if it's still inoperable and untagged and it's the same vehicle that was noticed up already that was impounded originally, we would just contact the tow vehicle and tow the vehicle again.
And then?
And then if they, technically they could go get it out of the impound again if they so chose to do that and, and, but there is, there are fees associated with that. And so, and so we're hoping that's a deterrent enough, but in some cases it's not, so.
Do you wait till someone turns it in as being back or nuisance or do you automatically check?
Most of the time we're in that, in those neighborhoods, like today, the cases that you saw, we have a couple in the same neighborhood. So if one was abated, we're going to be back in those neighborhoods looking at the other cases that are opening. So if it, if we notice that it's back out there or we get a call, because most often it will come from that call that, oh, it's back. The city didn't do anything. Well, we did and it's back and we'll go through the process again.
I just would like to make a comment about this because this is such a recurring issue, such a enormous amount of time by staff is, is spent with this. But this has to come down to some community pride and understanding that we live in an organized place and people, you do, you do need to abide by the rules for the good of the whole public. And to have to continually go out to the same properties, I find is just so discouraging and I would hope that our community would, would see that and understand their role in this. And it's not because we, because you're being policed about it or being sent notices. It's, you should take some pride, be a good neighbor, and take care of this. It's really discouraging to me every time we have to do this.
You can see the results in other cities between here and Colorado Springs.
Yes.
One other quick question. So with this notice, we don't re-notify the person? We just come pick up the vehicle then?
Yes, normally that's, that would be the process. Same with weeds. Most of the time when we show up to mow weeds, we, our millers will leave a cart on their, on their doors, will leave a door hanger. Those instances, we, we do usually go above and beyond what the code actually says and we usually try to make contact, but if there's no one there and no one's present and we, it's, it's on our log to be taken care of and we'll take care of the situation.
And I know council said that we would change the verbiage in the letter to meet this, but it would just be nice to let them know, I mean, maybe a hanger or something like what we do, just saying you are still in violation of this so that if they do show back up and the car's gone again, that there is some communication there that, you know.
Our typical process is that, is to do that very thing. And so it is to give them another, another notice, but technically by code it's not required to and, you know, if that's something that the governing body wants to take up at a future date and, and time to talk about nuisances and, and how we handle them if we want to do something differently or how we approach that with the public.
Well, and I think this idea of really, you know, not only saving staff time, but this idea again, I mean, it's really, it's the same offense that you're repeating and repeating and repeating. So I mean, it's, it's a never, it could be a possibly a never-ending cycle. And to me, this really cuts off a lot of costs and a lot, not only staff time, but also mail time and just the, the time that you're given to make the changes. And I think, you know, if you could make the changes the first time, which is over almost 60 days, I mean, I think that's the hard thing is, is that it would be another 60 days and to me that's staff watching out for that. So to me, I mean, unfortunately, I wish, I'd rather you do it yourself, but if you can't then.
And I feel very comfortable with this because we've, we've talked about this at length with the extent our staff goes to to communicate and help with someone. If someone needs assistance, if it's, if it's an elderly person or a disabled person or someone who doesn't have the means or there are other factors, communication is the key. And if people just communicate, it seems where you go to great lengths to try and be helpful in this process. And I really appreciate that too. And that's why I feel very comfortable when people don't participate in that process, that there's a backstop that we need to be able to take care of it for the neighbors and the rest of the community. So this is ordinance, what?
What? Twenty-eight, twenty-five.
Twenty-seven.
No, twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, twenty-five.
I would move that we adopt ordinance Number 2825-2019.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve ordinance 2825-2019. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Alright, we've completed EF and G, Stephen G, so we're ready for item H. The right one. The governing body's asked to consider and approve abating a motor vehicle nuisance at 2112 North Main Street. If approved, it would be Resolution 2789?
Yes.
-2019.
This is your motor vehicle nuisance at 2112 North Main Street? Or either being inoperable or untacked?
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 2789-2019. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's moved and seconded that we approve 20, Resolution 2789-2019. All those in, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
So Caleb, the printed agenda has, just so we get the record right. I mentioned, reading this, I mentioned 2112 North Main Street. But the agenda has item, oh, never mind. Still off. Moving on. Everything's good.
It has been complicated numbering today.
Somebody take away my pen. Item I, governing body's asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance, abating a nuisance at 406 North Fifth Street. If approved, it would be 2790-2019.
This also is a violation, meaning that motor vehicle nuisance at 406 North Fifth Street. Wow, that's.
I move that we approve Resolution 2790-2019.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 2790-2019. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item J, would remove a motor vehicle nuisance at 211 South First Street. If approved, it would be Resolution 2791-2019.
This resolution is also for authorizing removal of motor vehicle nuisances at 211 South First Street.
I move that we had approved Resolution Number 2791-2019.
Is there a second?
No second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 2791-2019. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item K, the governing body's asked to consider and approve an environmental nuisance resolution which would abate from 2112 North Main Street in a violation of the environmental code. If approved, it would be Resolution 2792-2019.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2792 at 2112 North Main Street.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 2792-2019. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thanks Caleb.
That concludes ordinances and resolutions. There's no old business, which brings us to item 12, new business A. The governing body is asked to consider and approve the selection of architects Todd Clark and Zach Vardy to assist with the Buffalo Dunes Golf Course Improvement Plan. I'll invite Jason to the mic.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Great golf day.
Hey, this is, yeah, this is an inside golf day. Exceptional. Before you, is I ask to approve Todd Clark and Zach Vardy to help with the Buffalo Dunes Golf Course Improvement Plan. Back in 2018, we sent out an RFQ for qualifications. We had seven architects submit qualifications. We visited with staff advisory board and Clay and I felt that the, we selected four to do telephone interviews with. Jennifer, myself, Clay, and Jared Smith conducted those and then based on what we concluded with the information on that, we decided that we would try to have the tandem of Todd Clark and Zach Vardy to help us move forward with the improvement plan. Right now, I guess alternatives are to approve Mr. Clark and Mr. Vardy to assist with the golf course improvement plan. Do not approve Mr. Clark and Mr. Vardy. Do not select any firms that submitted RFQ and provide additional staff direction. Staff recommends alternative one. The physical note, the golf course improvement plan will be paid for by funds already on hand with Fund 71. I believe we have $52,500 in that fund as of right now.
What is their price or how did they?
It's.
Total design fee of $20,000 and then heard they have an hourly and a travel and onsite time rate.
So it's, it's based on the scope of work that they do at the time of they complete a project.
Yeah, I appreciate the combination of the experiences and the specialties each one of them have and I think it really, it was smart to have them collaborate in that they were willing to really speaks to the professionalism that I think that they can bring to this project.
Yes, they're, they both have excellent credentials.
So Jason, so what are you hoping as far as, when would the, when would you have something?
I think if we're able to move forward today, I think we would, Clay and I would sit down and kind of map out what we think needs to get done the soonest, present that to advisory board, get their input and then sit down with, with Mr. Clark and Mr. Vardy and try to put together a plan of three or four things that we can knock off the list and then add a few more as, as we move forward.
Is this something that your staff would do, some of this work?
We would do a lot of this in-house, yes. Yes, sir.
Once they decide?
There, obviously.
It was pretty extensive. I was reading too.
Yes, there's, and I apologize about all the, I think there were four or 500 pages worth of information that we sent y'all, so. There, there are, there will be some things that, that we'll be able to do in-house and there will be some things that Todd and Zach will have to, will have to rely on their expertise as far as some shaping and, and different things like that, so. That, the, the idea for, as far as staff is concerned, is monies that we are able to save yearly. If we can move some of those over into Fund 71, that's how we would pay for the, for the improvements as we go forward.
I, I shared this with you earlier, but I really appreciated reading their proposal because I recall when we first talked about the RFQ, it, I didn't really understand the scope of what we were talking about or why this was necessary. And I think if anybody else had questions like that, as I did back at, at that time a year ago, to go through and read this proposal really does very explicitly point out for someone who even isn't a golfer, doesn't understand course design or anything of the technical nature of it, it is informative in the way they laid out their, their vision of the plan and specific to our side, I think is very useful. So I appreciated the, the large packet.
Yes ma'am, thank you.
Did this go before the golf advisory board?
We talked about it at several meetings, yes sir. We did not ask the golf advisory board to, you know, who, who would you like to select and stuff. They, they relied on Clay and I. As, as we moved through the process, we, we informed them of where we were at, why we were selecting, who we were selecting. If they had any questions, we, we tried to answer them.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve Todd Clark and Zach Vardy to the, assist with the Buffalo Dunes Golf Course Improvement. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Todd Clark and Zach Vardy to assist in the Buffalo Dunes Course Improvement Plan. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried.
I was gonna say, I didn't know how the assistant city manager had any time to attend another meeting, so I was surprised to see her name on there with all the work she's doing.
We, we actually did this back in, I think it was October of 2018. Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
Item 12B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve revisions to the city's purchasing and contract manual adopted in 2011. Melinda?
Annually, the governing body is, formally adopts the financial management guidelines and they're reviewed annually for revisions. This year in 2018, the staff has developed two new guidelines. One of them is financing public improvements and the other one is the records retention policy. Then we made revisions to cash management and investments and then the purchasing and contracting manual. The financing of public improvements is a new section that pertains to what tools the city uses to finance public improvements. And the new records retention policy sets forth the procedures for maintaining, archiving, and destruction of many types of public records that are kept by the city. The cash management and investment revisions were related to changes in wording of new investments that have come into play and just really just wording on that section there. The purchasing and contracting manual, it had several necessary revisions due to changes in personnel. We moved around sections within the policy. But one of the most important sections was the emergency purchases and it has new language on what to do when there's no time in advance to get approval from the governing body and a paragraph relating to a declared state of emergency such as a tornado. So we've added that section into the purchasing and contracting manual. We made some changes to travel as it relates to continuous travel. So annually, there's probably always going to be some changes to this manual just due to the state of it. So those were all included in your packet. There is no fiscal note. We just need to print new books.
I make a motion we approve the revisions in additions to the financial management guidelines as presented.
I second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the purchasing and contracting manual updates. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Melinda.
Item 12B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve, no, 12C. The governing body's asked to consider reappointing Phil Escarino as the city's representative to the Finney County Economic Development Corporation's Board of Directors. In January of 2016, the commission appointed Mr. Escarino to the Development Corporation Board to a three-year term. That term ended on December 31st, 2018. We'd ask you, your recommendation is to reappoint Mr. Escarino?
I'll make the motion that we appoint Phil Escarino as the city representative to the Finney County Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we appoint Phil Escarino to the Finney County Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 12D, the governing body is asked to consider and accept a petition for the creation of a community improvement district from Garden City Plaza LLC. Melissa?
Mayor, Commissioners, we agree before you the petition to request to create the Garden City Plaza CID district. Neighborhood and Development Services staff has been working with the owners and the representative from Bob Sletcha from RBS Group who is here with us today and talks to rehabilitate and revive, redevelop the property generally located at 22 Kansas Avenue. Currently, the shopping plaza is home to J.C. Penney's, The Buckle, and Trade Home Shoes to just name a few. Currently, the shopping plaza is home to JCPenney's, The Buckle, and Trade Home Shoes, to just name a few of the retail businesses that are located there now. The request for a CID is to make improvements such as, but not limited to, the facade of the building, canopies, and sidewalks. Creation of a CID is a multiple-step process, the first of which is accepting this petition, should you approve it, to create the CID. Attach for review is the petition request from the owner of the property. The property in the proposed CID would include the entire shopping plaza, the strip mall location, which does not include the former Sears building, which sometimes people get confused. We want to make clarification. So it wouldn't include Sears or their parking lot. The second step in the CID process is to adopt a resolution of a tent, which schedules the public hearing for the creation of the CID district. Tentatively, this resolution will be brought before you at the February 19, 2019, city commission meeting. There are no fiscal obligations from the city under the CID process. The alternatives before you, governing body may accept the petition request for Garden City Plaza CID. You may not accept the petition request for Garden City Plaza CID, or the governing body may defer action until a later date. Staff recommends alternative number one.
So you're indicating that the parking lot isn't something they can use dollars for to improve?
They can, under the CID, and I think their proposal is to do some improvements to their parking lot. So highlighted in orange is their parking lot that they would be allowed to improve.
Oh, I see.
So, yeah, so the Sears building's a big white space there with their parking lot. So that part of it wouldn't be improved under the CID.
Is something would take place in 2019?
That is their tentative schedule, as long as their CID is approved, that they would make the facade to rehabilitate this area.
No drawings yet?
Not yet.
Not yet.
I'm touring with the architect next Monday.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the petition for a request for Garden City Plaza for the CID.
I'll second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the CID for Garden City Plaza LLC. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Item 12E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an appointment to fill the vacancy left by Imlyn Schwartz on the Police Citizens Advisory Board. Chief or captain?
Good afternoon. In December, we had a vacancy appear on our Police and Citizens Advisory Board. We received two applications for that vacancy. Staff recommends that, I'm sorry, I'll back up. The two applications were Carolina Ruiz and Kyle Charles. Staff recommends that Carolina Ruiz be appointed to the PCAB.
I make a motion we approve Carolina Ruiz to the Police Advisory Board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the recommendation for this Police Citizens Academy, or Advisory Board, excuse me. Any further discussion? All those...
Just quick, does this fill the board then? I mean, is the board full? Do you have a full board then, or are you still looking? Don't know?
I'm gonna have to get back.
Okay.
I'm unfortunately not on the, on that anymore, so I don't know if we're full yet.
Okay, that's fine.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
With that, I believe we're ready for the consent agenda. There's no recommended changes to the consent agenda, so unless commissioner wants to pull an item off to talk about separately, the appropriate motion would be to approve the consent agendas, item F1 through F7.
I move that we approve the consent agenda, F1 through F7.
Is there a second? Commissioner Dale, all those, any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, F1 through 7, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, Commissioner reports. Commissioner Underwood.
So it's been a full day. I really appreciated finally seeing the infamous or famous now video that we, has been talked about. I know lots of other people have seen. I am excited to hear a lot of young people talking about the video, especially that they've seen in the schools, and I really appreciate the energy and the effort and the, and the attention that we're going to giving something as important as the Big Pool or something, not only historic, but also of big value to our community. So the pre-meeting was very, very good. I appreciated the community members coming and also making comments. I know that there's lots going on. I was really excited to read the sales tax report and the willingness of our citizens to really make some great things happen here, the zoo improvements. I'm looking forward to seeing some things at the zoo very early on. So I'm excited about the spring. I know it's been cold and everyone's kind of inside and hopefully being careful. I saw our police, our police were out early this morning along Mary Street, which if there was any way to get off of that street, I would have, but I was going to the high school, so I was scared. But I really appreciate their attention and, you know, I saw several times where they were really looking out and blocking off, you know, streets for protection. I also, I really appreciate some of the videos I've recently placed on Facebook and then, you know, just really informing people, hey, this is what we're doing. Only one suggestion I would is if we'd have dual languages, and so that would be really helpful, because I know Facebook is, it's growing in its popularity. And I'm not going to admit how much I look or don't look at Facebook, so. But I, again, I appreciate all the work that's happened today. It's really been good work and I'm excited about this year, so thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Burns?
Yeah, I, I would like to thank the staff for revising the guidelines, particularly to the use of financial tools and how we finance public projects. And I think for anybody who watches our meetings and we go through these processes and there's multi-step processes to approving some of these, the use of some of these tools and the way that we finance things, that's a lot of the business that we do. And so I draw the attention to the packet, pages 126 to 140, because I think it's a really good explanation and in clear language of our guidelines that, that we're now to use and essentially have been using, but codified. And it really is a nice explanation of, of the business that we do here. I had the opportunity to go to the Friends Annual Meeting this weekend. It was very nice. It was a, it was a good reminder of a public-private partnership that helps to improve the zoo, and I think that that's always a good thing. Furthermore, I know that childcare has been a big issue in our community. I know I talk about it a lot because it's so central to my life and such a big issue and something that I really hope to have some impact with. And, and I appreciate the work that KCSL and our economic development folks and so many partners across the community are doing to try and, and make some inroads there. And I hope that we can be a part of it when the time comes, whatever the public role is. I hope to take an active role in it, as, I hope we all will. Guess that's all my notes. I could talk forever, but.
Commissioner's asking. Very good pre-meeting this morning. Just suggestion maybe, I know we're trying to get, we hit all the schools and all the kids and I know we're having a lot of town hall meetings on, or not really town hall, but community meetings on this, but maybe if we could get you and Lauren to videotape the presentation and have it on YouTube and Channel 8, so it could get out to, and that might be something that you're already thinking of, but just a, just a thought that I could throw out there. One dimension, I know at our last town hall meeting, it was only 15 minutes long, and I noticed that, you know, the interest in our town hall meetings, there isn't, we don't have a lot of community coming to those. And it might be a good discussion item for the commission to look at. Back many years ago, the town halls were created to get input from the community on big issues that the commission was dealing with. And they went to different schools, but is this something that, you know, something that the commission needs to think about? Is this something that its time has kind of come and gone and because over the last year, year and a half, it just doesn't seem like we schedule these and nobody, nobody turns out to these. And I know it takes staff's time to set these up, takes staff's time to get everything turned off. So it might be a good discussion item to see if that's something that we want to continue.
I don't know if we, we couldn't really film those. That'd be the only disadvantage to it. As far as putting it on Channel 8.
Film, you lost me, mayor.
Well, record the session like we do on Channel 8, if we have it at a different venue.
We do. Oh, if we had it at a different venue.
Well, I was just thinking if we had it at all. I mean, it's, yeah, that would create a whole nother, a whole nother level of work for the staff. I was just thinking, I mean, that's something.
We could try it.
Well, no, I was just thinking that was, it's, time has come and gone and that we probably don't need to do them anymore unless there's a big issue. I brought it up that when it did start, mayor, they did, they did have them at different areas because what the whole concept was is to get out to the various areas in the community and they had them at different schools. But it seems like the last year and a half, when we do have town hall meetings, when we do schedule them, we've had staff come to us with, you know, they, the staff has had to come up with, you know, just presentations to fill it in. And like I said, the last meeting was 15 minutes long and we kind of went around the horn and explained who we were and everything. And so I mean, the one, the one, the one issue, and I, I know it's a big topic and Jennifer's been out in the community, you know, it was the Big Pool, but we only spent a few minutes on that because we don't have a report from city staff on that. So it's probably something that we need to, to think about because that does take staff time and energy setting up. And then, and then, you know, when we're done, they're trying to wrap everything up. So something to think about. The other thing, I noticed in the paper the other day that the U.S. Census Bureau was seeking local employees for the 2020 census. And I know we've had a lot of discussion about trying to get people, and it's a temporary job that's available here in Garden City to do the census. And I just wanted to mention this because it's something that's very important to this community because of the last census that we had and how bad it was not performed in our community. And I know we had a lot of repeals and appeals to the Census Bureau to get that right and it still wasn't in our favor. So I just wanted to mention that, that they did have that in one of the roundup briefs in the, in the local paper. And if you are looking at getting a temporary job for the census, their, the information is at www.2020census.gov/jobs, or you can call 1-855-510-0194 to contact them for that. It is very important that we have an accurate count in our community because it does, it does affect our community and some funding for our community federally and as well as through the state, so. Other than that, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dale?
I'm gonna be shorter than Roy.
Yeah.
Sunday evening, the wife and I had a real privilege. We were invited to the Vietnamese Tet New Year celebration at the high school and, and they really know how to put on a colorful program and some great food. So I say to you that didn't go, maybe you ought to consider it next year. It's some great food and some great people and they're really friendly and they've been part of our community since about 1982, I think, about the time that Ivy peeled. And so they've well-established, good citizens and good neighbors, so. Next time, try to get out there. Want to go to, we talk about it in the past and it's, it's, it's it's exciting to see what's going on in our city, both through the city staff and the people there, the, the commission here and, and the vision that, that we have all had. And if you start looking at some of these projects that's going to be happening in the next five years, we've got Jenny Barker Road, the zoo, the fire station, the gun range, a long overdue project on 8th Street, which we all know is, is one that you almost need a mouthpiece to drive down because it'll chatter your teeth. But other than that, that's going to beautify that area and that's, that's in the future. And, and if you look at the things that we're looking at as far as the Starbond project, not necessarily something that we're involved in as far as doing the labor, but, but helping with the, the privates that are going to build the Starbond project is going to be great for this community. The other thing is, is the thing that my dear friend Jennifer is out educating the community on what we need to do with a legend, and it is a legend. It's a landmark. It's been there for, forever. And it's, it's a big decision that will have to be made, but I think it's one that we're going to look at and address and come up with some projects in the community that will fulfill our need for the pool. The other thing is, is, is I want to congratulate the people that won safety awards today. I think it's very important. We have a great safety program within our community or within our, with our organization. It promotes safety, makes everybody conscious, and it keeps us, saves us money. It saves us pain, families from having to go through someone that gets hurt. So that is, is a great program and I'm 100% behind it. Last and not least is, is first responders. It's, it's, it's a safety program that we don't have any control over. The last meeting we was here, I talked to you about, that there'd been 11 police officers killed in 2019 already. As of today, it's 2000, it's 13. That's seven officers have been shot in the line of duty. There's been some that were killed in, on, on vehicles and other, other ways. But 13 of our first responders in this country have already lost their life this year. And I ask everybody to go home, think about them, think about their wives, think about their kids, and give a little prayer and pray for all of our first responders today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer, for all your work on the pool presentations and hopefully we'll have that report soon. Also, I wanted to thank all those that received safety awards and keep that going, Ali. It's good program and stresses safety in all of our departments. Is, what happened over at Gillespie? 10-11 or whatever?
There's the question about the nuisance abatement that the commission passed a resolution on in late January. I believe that the abatement was to be removed on Monday.
Was it?
It got delayed by weather, so Melissa, can you update us on that?
We are working with the property owner to get his property abated and he had a deadline of Monday at 11:30 and we're still working with him to get his property.
I understand he put a fence up, did he?
That is correct.
Okay. Screen?
A screen.
Okay.
So we're still working, continuing to work with that property and to
Okay.
deal with his property.
Thank you. I have a letter I want to read. From one of the commissioners. It's dated January 30th, 2019. Dear Mayor Dan Fankhauser, dear mayor, as required by law, I am required to inform you that I am resigning my position as city commissioner effective February 19th, 2019, at the end of the regular commission meeting. I do this with much sadness and regret about this aspect of leaving. Since 1978, Garden City has been my home and I have always been very proud to have lived and worked here and honestly always thought I would remain here. I appreciate Matt Allen with his knowledge and desire, who has helped guide our city to what it is today. He has developed a great staff and through them, the commission has been enabled to fulfill its goal each year. My fellow commissioners over the last six years are second to none. My fellow commissioners over the last six years are second to none in coming together, getting things done, always looking forward to the future, and helping sensitive to the needs of our citizens. I feel honored to have served with each one. I have enjoyed six fulfilling years in serving this great community. I have spent almost all my adult life serving in one way or another, serving this country for 20 years in the United States Navy, then the city, county, and state governments for a total of 36 years. I have been blessed, honored, and thankful to have had, to have had the opportunity to be able to serve. As a friend of mine would say, it's all good. Lynn and I have no children or grandchildren in Garden City, and as we age, we have to be more realistic about our future and how life changes. As we approach our 80s, we have faced, we are faced with perfectly normal fact that we are going to be, to need and desire our families to be closer. We both love this town and great memories of living our lives here. We will keep you all in our prayers as we would ask you to do with us. Sincerely, Melvin L. Dale. And this would be effective at the end of this meeting today, or 19. And I'll call on our counsel to make a few comments.
I have provided the commission with the ordinance that was passed in 2016, as well as one state statute that addresses vacancies in governing body and elected officials. At this point, there is not a vacancy, so you really do not need to take any affirmative steps. When Commissioner Dale ends, at the end of the next meeting, then there will be a vacancy, and after that, you can take steps to fill the vacancy. The commission has a lot of discretion on how to fill the vacancy. It's, it's basically left up to your discretion, and through a majority vote of the remaining members, you would select someone to fill the position until the next election, which I think the primary would be in August possibly, and the general would be in November. A person would run for Commissioner Dale's position and would serve a full term if elected in November. Tradition has been that governing bodies have asked for input from citizens, eligible citizens that could serve on the commission. Some commissions have decided to hold public forums, either a pre-meeting or for individuals that are interested to come to a meeting and speak as to why they're interested and what their credentials are and their qualifications. But that's totally left up to the remaining four of you on the commission. There has been other discussions at times that, that the person that was the next person in line at the last election that didn't receive enough votes to be on the commission would be considered for the position. Those were just some of the ideas discussed by previous commissions. So it's my understanding that at the February 19th meeting, the, an item on the agenda will be discussion of the process that the four of you would like to consider, and you'll give direction to staff or counsel as to how you would like to proceed, and then we'll carry out that process for you. So you need to be considering between now and the 19th, how you think you would like to proceed. The statute is, is very nondescriptive as to how you need to proceed, and, and the ordinance is even less descriptive. It just indicates it's by majority vote of the remaining four, which if there's a tie in the vote, then I, I somehow have the opportunity to vote, and which I did one time, and made one friend and lost one friend, so.
We'll take, take this up at the February 19th meeting and decide. Put that on the agenda, I guess. Anything else?
I just want to say it's been an honor, serving with you, Commissioner Dale.
Thank you.
I just, your long history of service, I mean, not only for our country, but for our city is exemplary, and I really appreciate being on the commission with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We all appreciate you. As my friend Roy would say, it's all good.
It's all good. All right. We are adjourned. Thank you. Well?
The position of being mayor, I know you'll do an outstanding job, and a little rusty at first, but you'll, you'll, you'll get back into this later.
It's a tough crowd.
I know. I had to throw that in there, just to give you a hard time, Mayor, but congratulations.
I, thank you. I can't, can't add much to what's already been said, but I will say, I've appreciated your year, and I look forward to 2019. And I did want to comment on the snow removal. I have received several comments about it, and I just want to thank Sam, his crew, let them know, you know, it helps when it doesn't freeze the same night that it snows, because that was a real disaster, and there wasn't much to do, and people didn't realize it, but, you know, you can't, you can't move ice very well. So we've got the airport up and running, and hopefully, I don't know about this weekend, but hopefully we've got hand, all hands on deck. And I, I wanted to just comment about some of the cooperation between other departments have helped out and jumped in. I mean, you know, there's not much going on at the Buffalo Dunes, and some of those people have helped, helped out, and I appreciate that. Other than that, yeah.